Okay, as we get nine o'clock.
I got.
It's me in order.
Yes, it is all right.
Our clerk's gonna lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Roll call.
Do you want some blood? So, Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Rose Wilsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yeah.
Item two, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? I had a question, six A resolution to authorize vehicle purchase, I guess I'm. And this is on the agenda again.
I sent an email out with commissioners following the committee, the whole meeting last week because that wasn't. So it wasn't. There was no determination where you wanted that to go. So I asked commissioners, would you like this on the agenda or not? Trying to confirm, got two replies, one said yes, one said no, I deferred to the yes.
Okay. I didn't think there was any further information at the committee of the whole that was given to us to. But we can leave that on there. Any, any other additions or corrections?
Well, Julie, to prove the agenda as presented.
Commissioner Simmons.
Let me pull some.
Yeah, we, we do that when we get down there.
Okay, thank.
She was asking about consent agenda, but we're not there yet, so.
Pulling something off. She said pull something off.
She was talking about the consent down here.
Well, is this the conversation that it's been outside this meeting or something?
No, she was talking about the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Japping the number six.
Didn't know what she was talking about and just seemed the.
She asked about pulling a consent agenda.
Okay.
When we get down there. Are there any other additions or corrections? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, I guess I did.
Okay.
Item three, review of minutes, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes.
I read the minutes, I'm making a motion to approve as presented.
Motion Commissioner Scott, do we have support?
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Wilsey, is there any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item three B, April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, closed session, meeting minutes.
Motion accept, April twenty seventh, two, equal session. Minutes.
We have a motion Commissioner Wilsey.
Well, second.
Support from Commissioner Scott, those were in front of us when we got here. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, motion carries item three C, May fourth, twenty twenty-three, committee of the whole, meeting minutes.
I read them and that's and I'll make a motion to accept them.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott. We have a support.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Motion, support from Commissioner Mahew, any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item three D, May fourth, twenty twenty-three, closed session minutes.
I read them, I'll make more to accept them.
Motion from Commissioner Scott. Support from Commissioner Mahew. Uh, any further discussion on that? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item four, public comment, this is on agenda item only. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item five correspondence, there's tons of them. Uh, we have correspondence from Elder County, Elder County related to Corn Law Creek flooding dam repair, opposition to firearms control legislation, constituent second amendment sanctuary county, support for dark store. Legislation, Subba Valley County Meta Health Authority Board Meeting Minutes. Livingston County Support for Second Amendment, Michigan Department of Natural Resources related proposed land purchase, Northeast Michigan Communities Agency related to Board Meeting Minutes, Oklahoma Township Downtown Development Authority Meeting. I don't, I don't want. Okay, county support all cons- constituent rights, Osceola County Opposition to all firearms control legislation, those have been received and filed. I did have a question on those, uh, Tim, the Michigan Department of Natural Resources with that, just like a, um, it looked like it was addressed to us, like what, what was that about?
They're required to report to you whenever they're gonna acquire land in the county. And this is the notice that that's what their intention are. I think there are instructions in there if you wanted to offer public comment to the DNR. Uh, or against the proposal, you can do that, uh, but they're required to provide that to local units whenever they acquire that level of land.
It's just kind of interesting. Item six, consent agenda.
Yes, for public comment?
I did.
Oh, really?
I did.
Went quick.
Yeah, he did.
Nobody commented.
All right.
Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we consent the whole agenda.
What?
I make a motion to consent to the whole agenda.
Hang on, right now, is there any, so you would like to consent to them all?
I made a motion.
Uh, I need to pull some.
Okay, so Tim, we have a motion, isn't this for discussion before there's a motion?
Um, no.
Your, your.
Commissioner Scott, I'm asking.
Your rules have always been make the motion a second, then have.
Commissioner Scott.
You always do this. Except what it is. The board rules say that any commissioner can pull any item and that.
All right.
Then that item is pulled regardless of any motion, so there could be a motion to consent everything. A commissioner could say, I would like to pull item whatever in that is pulled.
So there's a motion on the floor, but now we have a commissioner that would like to pull certain items, so the next step is to pull the items, correct?
You have a motion on the floor, you need a second or not.
Okay.
And then proceed from there.
We have a motion on the floor to consent to all of those, is there a support?
Excuse me.
Hang on, nope, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll support it.
We have a motion with support, so now we do discussion or we take a roll call vote?
Uh, well, commissioners can pull.
At this point in time?
At this point, yes.
Okay, so items to be pulled, Commissioner, Commissioner.
I'd like to pull A, F, G, H, I, and K.
A. F.
G.
G.
I, K.
H. I. K, and I would like to pull L, because I think that needs to be, to be read, that's a resolution to proclaim National Police Week. I think that definitely deserves to be read aloud. Okay, so. A, you said?
Yes.
F, you said?
Yes.
H, you said?
G.
Oops, I missed G. G, you said?
Well, and all these. He was.
A, F, G, H, I, K.
Correct, H, I, K, L.
J, K, L.
First three is A, F, G. And the last four is H, I, K, L.
Hey, anything else, Commissioner Mahew, did you want anything else pulled?
No. So.
Okay, so we have a motion to, Tim, how do I do this now, pull these individual ones? A motion to pull, or do we do a consent, to consent the other ones?
We verify the board rules, my understanding, my memory is that, um, you know, the motion would be, you know, acknowledged and approved with the exception of those items, but let's just make sure we got.
I think you're correct there. A, F, G, H, I, K, L, correct?
H, F, G. I, K. L.
We get a motion to consent, it would be the. B. E. J. And J.
It's weird, because that one would be motion.
We're making sure we get this correct for everybody's.
Okay, so, uh, since section five point three point two, uh, the board rules. At a meeting of the commissioners where a consent calendar has been prepared, the board upon motion of a commissioner shall vote on the approval of matters included under the consent item before putting the question to commissioners. The chairperson shall permit the commissioners to remove from the consent calendar those items on which they have questions or wish to debate. A vote shall not be required to remove a matter from the consent calendar. Uh, the chairperson shall then call a roll call vote to approve or disapprove the consent calendar. So your motion now would be to approve or not the items that were not pulled, so those, uh, A, F, G, H, I, K, and L would not be part of the motion to approve the consent.
Okay, so right now we have a, it would be to approve items B, C, D, E, and F.
Right.
A, B.
What are we?
Wait a minute. Not F.
Oh, I'm sorry, A, B, C, D, E, enough, E, J, she's, B, E, and J.
A, wait, wait a minute.
B, C, D, E, and J.
Those will be approved, yeah.
B is resolution to accept a coat to construct a laminated pole frame building with bus wash bay.
Yes.
C would be resolution to authorize USDA housing preservation grant pre-application. D would be resolution to assess local nine oh one charge to service users and to rescind resolution twenty-three dash forty-five. E would be resolution to amend the contract procedures policy. And J would be to resolution to enter into a settlement and general release agreement to resolve pending litigation. Correct? So now I need a, uh, we have, do we need another motion for that? Because that wasn't the original motion.
You don't, the motion was to approve consent.
Okay.
So.
I want to make sure that this is correct. Um, any further discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
Uh, I just want to make, as to the rules, we're only pulling these to have debate on them. We're not pulling them not to talk about them.
Right.
We have to vote on these ones now individually. The other ones. Commissioner Simmons.
When you read that policy, could you read that policy one more time about consent agenda, please?
Just bear with me for just a second. At a meeting of the commissioners where a consent calendar has been prepared, the board upon motion of a commissioner shall vote on the approval of the matters included under the consent calendar. Before putting the question to commissioners, the chairperson shall permit the commissioners to remove from the consent calendar those items on which they have questions or wish to debate. A vote shall not be required to remove a matter from the consent calendar. The chairperson shall then call a roll call vote to approve or disapprove the consent calendar.
So I made the air, I should have asked, i- i- it was, it was jumped on to approve all of them, I should have prior asked which, which ones, if any commissioners want any. Pulled, this is a tongue twister.
Already, yeah.
Okay, yep, we, we were there. Any further discussion on B, C, D, E, and J?
Wait just a second. If you should ask me, well, he's already got a motion on the floor. To prove all this.
Correct, now there's a, this, now this is the motion to approve item B, C, D, E, and J, the ones that were just read. Is there any further discussion on that? Commissioner Simmons, what?
These had to be approved.
She has a question.
Yeah, these had to be pulled before the motion was made, right?
No, any commissioner can pull any item from consent calendar.
Even after there's a motion on the floor to approve it.
May not be the, the preferred sequencing, but it definitely works.
That was my air, I should have asked if any commissioners want any pulled before that motion was made.
So then in discussion, what happened was a number of these resolutions were identified to be removed from the consent, so they're automatically removed from the motion, because they're no longer consent items.
Okay.
Okay.
Or none, yes.
So there is a motion on the floor right now. With support, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Item six, a resolution to authorize vehicle purchase, this resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert, the sheriff's office, including the correctional facility maintains a fleet of vehicles for department use. The sheriff recently purchased a twenty twenty-three Chevy Tahoe from Burger Chevrolet through the state of Michigan Extended Purchasing Program for transportation of jail inmates. The general appropriation resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-three requires that all purchases made with funds appropriated in the budget shall be made in conformance with the county's purchase procedures policy as adopted and amended by the board. And that budgeted funds are appropriated contingent upon compliance with the county's purchasing procedures. The purchasing procedures policy requires board of commissioners approval for all purchases of five thousand dollars or more. Approval of the resolution will complete the authorization requirement of the policy. Is there any further information? Uh, I guess, I, I guess, hold on, that's my fault. Uh, we, there's a motion on the floor? There anybody that's going to support this, or anybody's gonna provide the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the off, uh, resolution.
We have a motion Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Wilsey. Discussion, is there any, any new information on this?
We have the funding for it. It's within the budget, it's not money outside the budget. It's not made up money, it's not manufactured money, we have the money in in the budget, in the corrections.
Sheriff, do you have any new information?
I don't.
Anything else, commissioners?
I just like to make comment.
Go ahead.
So, in the past, it was brought up that the jail was looking for a good ball, that would be more efficient for some of their transport. We all do, a little bit of this has not gone as planned, but again, this vehicle would be for the jail, it's coming from commissary funds to pay this vehicle, the money is there for the vehicle. Strongly suggest that we move forward with this. Don't need to cause any more issues that's come about this, we've learned a lot from this. We've learned that the processes have to make sure to be done correctly, and I feel that is our job, make sure that happens, and it will. I just feel very strongly, we need to move forward and purchase this vehicle.
Any further discussion? Pardon me, go ahead.
I don't remember any discussion about work to see what's going in any of the meetings.
December twenty first, two thousand twenty-one, the commission prior to this one. We talked at the cow meeting about applying for USDA grants for four different vehicles. And number three vehicle was twenty twenty-two Ford utility and police interceptor for used as a jail transport vehicle. So it, it was in the minutes that we talked about it and we approved, and it was unanimously approved to apply for the federal assistance.
Did we, did we find out at the committee of the whole, uh, we had briefly discussed, uh, how much money we'd received out of those grants? Last week, I think somebody asked. Because you brought those minutes up last week, correct, Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Did you?
So I don't, I don't know.
Was there?
There was no information at that time.
Is there any new information on that question?
Um, that'd be better, it's the USDA grants that we applied for in the beginning of two thousand twenty-two.
For those four vehicles.
Did we receive all the money that we requested?
Absolutely.
Which was how much, do you recall?
It was just shy of a hundred thousand for the three vehicles, the fourth one was taken out.
In, in August, in August of twenty-two, we bought, we, we purchased, we passed a resolution to buy two patrol cars. It wasn't in the resolution that, it was USDA, it said in the resolution that would use grant money and let me see here, I have it. Adopted August twenty-fifth, uh, with a combination of grant funds and budgeted allocation to, to Tahoe models twenty-two's Chevy Tahos from Burger Chevrolet through the My Deal Purchasing Plant. Not total cost not to exceed sixty-seven thousand two forty.
Is there, we, uh, Tim, to compile all this information that, that, because now I'm confused on how many vehicles, because Deputy Vettiger said three, he had said four. Like, I, I personally would like to table this until there's more information, because now we're getting thrown all, all information that I feel should have been presented to us prior to this vote?
I can feel my best, uh, grants were applied from the sheriff's office, so we were you know, our office receiving them when you did, uh, but yeah, I can, short answer is yes, I can gather all that.
How many, uh, the minutes that Commissioner Scott is, is talking about, how many vehicles were discussed, how many were voted on? How much money from the USA DA grant was provided?
For what vehicles?
And for, yeah, I, for what vehicles? Let's get all these facts out on the table. I personally.
I'll second the table.
I personally like to table this.
Good.
Sheriff's office can give us all the USDA grant information for twenty-two.
Twenty-one and twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, next year, next meeting, please.
With vehicles, exactly what grants went with, what vehicles? We have a motion to table this with support, I moved, I tabled it with the support from Commissioner Scott, correct, Commissioner Scott?
Yes, correct.
Any further discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item F, resolution to approve Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan Administrative Service Agreement. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert, Oklahoma County and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan entered into an agreement wherein Blue Cross Blue Shield Michigan would pay the claims of healthcare services provided to inmates housed in the correctional facility. The agreement is updated annually through execution of an administrative services agreement. The proposed resolution recognizes Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan as a sole source provider of inmate health insurance as defined in the purchasing procedures policy, and as such, normal bidding requirements are waived. Final cost associated with the health insurance coverage is determined by the number of inmates served, but the proposed agreement does not require an initial deposit of eleven hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
I'll make a res, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Commissioner Scott.
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Wilsey, discussion?
I'd like to have this explained a little bit more to me, if we just cover the inmates?
Yes.
And what's the charge for that?
It depends on the number of inmates, I did look up our expenditures for the, for fiscal year twenty-two, we spent in addition to the, uh, eleven hundred thirty-nine dollars, uh, deposit, we spent in fiscal year twenty-two, nine thousand four hundred five dollars fifty-five cents. Uh, this would be likely the equivalent of co-pays and deductibles on the policy itself, and so far fiscal year twenty-three with seven months, uh, uh, past, we've spent seven thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars ninety-one cents, but suggests that we'll probably be paying more, uh, this year than we did last year. Uh, the alternative to this, uh, because Blue Cross is the only provider for inmate, uh, medical insurance, our only option then is to go without and then pay the full cost of any medical, uh, treatments, uh, that inmates have, uh, you might recall here, a few months ago, we had an inmate, uh, jumped from a landing in our stairwell and landed, so I, obviously with that particular case alone, I think the interference probably saved us a considerable amount of money. So I would strongly recommend that you approve the resolution.
I just wanted to know what the, you know, that's the only reason I want to pull it down, how much does this cost?
Because I need it.
Okay, thank you.
For recess.
As we all wanted to know, I pulled it on it.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, I started the answer.
Any further discussion on it? Roll call vote.
Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yeah.
Item six, G, resolution to approve funding for the strike team investigative narcotic group. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator Timothy Delahoney, the strike team investigative narcotic group, sting consists of sworn law enforcement officers serving six counties, including Oklahoma County. Sting officers have observed a dramatic increase in the use and delivery of methamphetamines as proven through seizure of twenty-four point six grams of crystal methamphetamine along with five long guns, one pistol, and one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars in cash through execution of warrant in the early mornings of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Sting officers seized more than three hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars worth of illegal and prescription drugs in twenty twenty-two, much of which fell into the opiate classification. Oklahoma County receives funds to combat opiate abuse through its participation in national settlement agreements with opiate manufacturers and distributors. Participation in sting is consistent with several opiate abuse prevention goals through abate strategies listed in the national settlement agreements. Approval of the resolution will authorize payment of an annual fee to sting for narcotics law enforcement services at a cost of ten thousand dollars with funds received from the national opiate settlement agreement. I'll make a motion to approve this.
I have a second.
Discussion?
How, how, how much was this, um, involved Oklahoma County as far as the narcotics, and all that's to go with sting?
I would refer you back to the sting, uh, annual report that was with the material that came with the committee of the whole meeting last week. Um, I couldn't tell you exactly how much of that three hundred thirty-one thousand was, but I did, uh, pull the one out with the, uh, twenty-four point six grams of crystal meth, I have no idea what the value of that is. And there were a couple of other, um, cases like that, that were specifically, um, uh, under the Oklahoma County category. That would be the only way I could double check on what those figures might be, I, I, but again, I'm at a loss to how to value that. Uh, and I would just also point out is the chair read in the motion that, um, you know, not just the, like the math, but the number of illegally obtained prescription drugs uh, were listed in that report too, and it's, uh, disturbing at best, you know, that when you see those kind of figures, but, um, again, how to value that, I couldn't begin to estimate.
Jim, can I make a comment on that, on Brenda's question?
Go ahead, sir.
So I'm the liaison with sting, um, so I've getting to know the operation a lot more, I'm talking with them quite often even besides the meetings, because of the importance of what they bring into our area, especially to Mills Township. We all know that we've had issues with meth, fentanyl becoming a bigger issue. Um, you know, Skidway area has been a problem, uh, but one thing that, um, Matt Jordan, he's the head of, uh, of the sting, it's a six county area. And a question that we had at our last meeting was kind of the question you asked Commissioner Simmons, was, well, what exactly direct effect have you had for certain counties? And his, his answer to that was like, he gave an example, they, they had a really big bust in Bay County, a big bust, a lot of drugs, cash, some handguns, long guns. And they busted in Bay County, but a lot of those drugs are working its way up to Oklahoma County, up to Roscommon County, so the nice thing about it was being a six county area, and you know, and work with the other operations too, is, you know, it's hard to say exactly what here for Oklahoma County is getting, but a lot of these other busts, Roscommon County, they're coming, because Roscommon's the highest uh, county through what they're doing, a lot of that comes into Oklahoma County, so they're doing a lot of great, great things.
I, I had a question on this, Tim, um, this doesn't look like there's an end date to this ten thousand dollar, uh, contribution?
This is a one-year.
It is.
So there's an invoice that sting has provided us.
Okay.
For, with the mouse dart for fiscal year.
Okay, because how I read that, it, it looked like it was a ongoing ten thousand dollars, which I just think it's something we need to talk about every year and, okay. Any further discussion on that?
The reason I ask this is when I'm asked questions about this at township halls, I like to hear you answer the questions that in the right hands, as we've seen question. How does that affect us? That's all the reason I ask.
Absolutely.
That's gonna be overrated money?
Yep.
Yeah.
Funds with the national opiate settlement agreement. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yeah.
Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
Item H, resolution to authorize adjustments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Oklahoma County budget, this resolution is sponsored by the county administrator Timothy Delahoney. On September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, the board of commissioners adopted resolution twenty-two dash one two eight to approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires that local units of government To approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty three. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires that local units of government periodically adjust. The budget to reflect revised revenue and expenditure levels. Approval of the resolution will authorize and acknowledge general fund revenue. Increases of two hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty two dollars and expenditures increase of two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. The resolution also approves budgets for ten special pur- purpose funds totaling eight hundred and eighty two thousand seven hundred and thirty one dollars. We have a. Resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution authorized adjustments fiscal year two thousand twenty three Oghama County budget.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wilsey. Is there support out there?
I'll support.
Motion from Commissioner Scott, is there any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. I see all these budget adjustments on here, and I and I am not a uh an accountant by any way, I'm not. Um. I guess stuff like this I'd like to discuss with. The administrator before. Uh cause it says increase controllable expenses to. Uh increase non-control. What what do you mean by controllable, non-controllable? And uh. I guess that's part I don't understand. So I mean, I don't understand. Why why we're doing it? And what are controllable and non-controllable expenses? So I guess the purpose of the of the adjustments is what I don't understand. And like I said, I am not an accountant. I don't pretend to be an accountant. Not even a bookkeeper. I'm not even a bookkeeper. That's my only.
Tim did, so I guess what's your? Is a question for the administrator, which which exactly?
Yeah, I guess that would be the question for the administrator. Why can't I answer it?
So I'll start with the question of why are we doing this? Uh we are compelled, as the chair read through the Uniform Budget and Accounting Act, to monitor the budget and when we see. Activity that will affect the budget either positive or negative, that we make an attempt to address. Through a budget amendment. Uh we were cited, as you might recall, in our audit this last year for not doing this enough. And uh it's about midway last year where we really began. In our stride in terms of monitoring this. Uh we did make some changes during the years, was noted in the audit. Um this is the second quarterly adjustment for fiscal year twenty three, and as you can see, these adjustments, there are quite a few of them. The. Resolution itself is several pages long and it references uh as we. Pointed out at the committee, the whole meeting, forty eight pages of um you know, line by line type adjustments uh that that we're referring to now. For sake of brevity, um in this resolution, I think it's six pages long already, rather than attach all forty eight pages, what this resolution does. Is breaks each one of these activities down into four categories, and those would be personnel services. Controllable expenses, non-controllable expenses, and capital outlay expenses. Those will fluctuate up and down depending on what that specific activity has going on. So anything with a personnel um. Expense. Uh cannot be adjusted by a department head, that must be adjusted here at the table by the Board of Commissioners, and that's just one of the rules in our uh policies and procedures. Uh personnel expenses would include anything from wages to any benefits uh to any in lieu payments like for health insurance and so on. Controllable expenses are expenses like office supplies, training, uh things that are definitely within the control of the individual budget administrator. Uh and those are areas where the budget administrators up to. Uh a certain amount are able to make adjustments on their own, uh and thereby keeping up uh throughout the year and not waiting even for the quarterly adjustments to happen. So if um. For instance, they, a department head were to realize that their office supplies were going to exceed the budget by three hundred dollars. If they have three hundred dollars, they don't believe they're going to spend during the year, they're free to transfer between those line items in that activity. Uh departments cannot cross fund lines, so it's specific to their department. Uh so if, for instance, we have a situation in the jail where training expenses are higher, but they believe their gas and oil expenses will be um reduced. Uh the sheriff has the ability to just move within those line items. The bottom line does not change, and that's key. If there were additional money being requested, that has to come to the board as well. Uh in the non-controllable expenses, these are things that departments have no control over. Uh treasurer, frankly, this year has done an excellent job of allocating bank fees to each of the various activities, and you see a number of those amendments that were in here. That's not a controllable expense. The bank is going to charge its fees. Department head can't call up and say, I want you to reduce those fees, can't do it. Uh utilities would fall under that uh. Non-controllable expense. And then finally, we have capital outlay expenses, and those are. Uh things, if you will, that are purchased. It might be furniture, it might be vehicles, but it's something tangible like that that we would probably add to our. Uh fixed asset list if its uh value is greater than five thousand dollars. So what you're seeing in this resolution is that breakdown by department and by special funds. So. You've got all your departments in the general fund who have amendments listed, but then we get into. Uh those special funds like friend at the court, land bank, uh childcare fund and so on are also working out as well. So you see those aggregate totals in those four categories. I did include the uh again, the forty eight pages that we put on the committee, the whole agenda. So if you needed to go back and look at a specific. Line item and where it's being adjusted, you can do that. Uh it's not typical that a commissioner would want to dive that deep, but it's available if you want to.
Well, when I look at these negatives, it says like Veterans Office Fund, it was decreased by twelve thousand sixty bucks. Where did that twelve thousand sixty bucks go? Right here. There's one fifteen, now it's one oh three. So.
Right, so in this case, in the Veterans Office, the reduction i- is. Tied to an employee who was hired who didn't need the health insurance. Uh we had an employee who resigned earlier in the year, so there was some uh health insurance commitment that we made. But when the new employee was hired, he didn't need to take the health insurance. So there's the savings. Of, it could be the full twelve thousand, and I think there's some wage savings in there too.
And so that money went from there to where?
It is a special fund, so it just is no longer listed as an expense, and if this holds. For the uh through the end of the year, if they end up only spending the hundred three thousand, uh the other twelve thousand will end up in their fund balance.
All right, maybe maybe moving forward, you can. Meet with the administrator one on one and.
I think that's a good idea.
Have further conversation about this.
Thank you.
This is.
Is. Go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
This is exactly why. We need to get that uh email that everybody received, well. Bring in in Maynard Costerman and Rod Taylor. The retired Department of Treasury. Person to give us training. This is, this budgeting is the basic. Number one job of commissioners. Not messing with HR problems, not messing with little. Individual little problems around the country. This is what a county commissioner is for. Manage the budget. The budget is a fluid. Operating. Piece of paper all year long. These things weren't being happened before. When you were commissioner before, these things were happening behind closed doors. We didn't see them. They didn't bring them to the commissioners. They'd move money around and 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 it was being done. It'd be a quick little number and they'd say, just pass it. And it passed. This is what you want to see. And just like, and like Tim just said. The bottom line doesn't change. We don't make up new money. We don't go down and print money up. We keep everything in the budget. And he's not allowed to spend any more. Money than what's budgeted. So when somebody comes to us and says, well. I need a five thousand dollar piece of equipment. We'd look into the budget. We have the administrator look in the budget, say, well, is there five thousand? They have to ask. At five thousand, they have to ask for our approval. And when he says, yeah, it's there, you can have it. Their money is there. Then we vote on it. So he's not giving away money that's not there. There's money there.
I I think to add on to you also, now we have the software that we didn't have before. To assist with this. To show.
They've been running counties for a hundred and fifty years in Michigan, and it's all. It's all this. This is it. This is just.
To show. To show these transactions and and to be much more simplified. And faster. Is there any further discussion on this? Roll call vote, please.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Item I, resolution to accept funding for an emergency notification system and to continue fiduciary responsibility. This resolution is sponsored by the emergency management consultant Mike Bowers. On January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, the board approved participation in the regional rate alert emergency notification system. The emergency notification system was subsequently activated Oghama County for neighboring counties to allow. A simulated deception of information to many messaging platforms. The region three professional emergency management advisory board recently agreed. To reimburse each participating county for the third year of annual cost associated with the notification system. Approval of the resolution will extend Oghama County's fiduciary responsibility for the five county emergency notification system. Purchase at a total cost not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and thirty seven cents for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget year. With each participating county agreeing to reimburse Oghama County for their proportionate share of the total cost.
Make the motion to approve the resolution.
A second.
Motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Wilsey, discussion?
Um Mike Bowers. Grant money.
Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
This is Mike Bowers. Emergency manager, the grant money, it's terrible grant money, nothing from the county. Um. He asked when he may first put this notification and system in it. If Oghama County could be the fiduciary. Uh have the responsibility for the fiduciary, all we are is a banker. We collect the money in from the grant money from all uh that represents all these other counties. And then as. We just act act as. As a third party banker, we take in the mon- grant money, we we write the checks for those things from that, never to exceed that in the amount. It's this is just. The county one on one, just like we talked about before.
Yeah, Commissioner Simmons.
Much apologize if I read this incorrectly.
It's okay.
When I, when I, when I pulled that.
Did you want any further discussion?
No.
You have the right to do that. It's fine.
I'm sorry, I didn't um. I didn't, uh I misunderstood why I read it.
It's okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item K, resolution to approve administrator slash controller employment agreement. This resolution is sponsored by the negotiation committee. On April thirtieth, twenty twenty, the Oghama County entered an agreement with Timothy Delahoney to serve as county administrator through May eighteenth, twenty twenty three. After deliberation, the board wishes to retitle the position as administrator slash controller pursuant to the County Board of Commissioners Act and to specify. The conditions under which administrator slash controller is to work with comp. What is to work and be compensated. Approval of the resolution will adopt an administrator slash controller employment agreement for a term to commence on May nineteenth, twenty twenty three. And expire on May eighteenth, twenty twenty six. Would anybody like to entertain this motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution to approve the administrator controller employment agreement.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wilsey. Do we have a support?
Support.
We have a. Support from Commissioner Scott. Discussion?
So I'm coming to me.
Commissioner Simmons?
Um I I look at it and um. The severance, I have a problem with that. For a hundred and eighty days. And I want to increase that in half. And as far as the three years. Now this administrator controller is a wholly new position that we. We've never had before versus administrator. So. That's why I have a, I have a hard time accepting it for three years. Um. And it's a whole nother theme, and administrator for the last three years have been a new, a new concept. Um. But putting controller on top of that, it's like. That that's, that's my concern. For three years. I like to try it for a year. I don't know. I'd want to try it for three years.
I was uh, are you are you completed? Are you done?
Yes, I'm.
I'd like to add to that, cause unfortunately I I did have to leave early during the closed session. Um, I think I made my position fairly clear. I'm a hundred percent in favor of this position, the administrator slash controller. Um. I think that will give more. Uh. Control to to Tim um. To assist with our our budget, which as we all know, definitely needs uh. Improvement, as we just looked at our revenues versus our expenditures. I think with this new role of administrator slash controller, there's going to be some pretty significant changes. Um with the clerk's office, with the treasurer's office. Um. What these changes will be, I don't know if we we all know. Um. I again am in favor of of this role, and I think Tim will do an excellent job, but I. I verbalized this in our close session that I would like one year as well. Um reevaluate this in a year and all five of us will still be sitting here in a year. Hopefully unless something tragically happens. Um. And and if all goes well and our budget's in a much better place, which I I'm hoping it will be, um I don't think at that time we'll have any problem. Uh fulfilling a three year contract. That's, that's my stance on this role. This, this motion.
You mean one year now and three years later, if all goes well? Is that what you're saying?
Uh would to reevaluate this in a year, I I if if all goes well, which I'm I'm sure it will, but it's going to be quite a transition. I mean, it was a transition with the administrator role as it was. I think it's it's went very, very well. Um but I think. Uh initially would be a a year, just to admit one, make sure we can, cause there is a wage increase with this, and there's going to be some transitioning happening. Um to make sure our budget can sustain this. This uh role. And uh see where we're at in a year. Um. That's, 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 that's my vote on this. Any other comments?
So it's compensation packages. Benefit package, all that, you're not debating one bit. You're just debating on how long he can work here. And. How much he can get if we can. If we wa- want to get rid of him.
I'm debating that.
The two points that we're talking about right now.
Is that a question? Yeah, I guess I.
Question, yeah.
I made that. Yes, I made that clear in in our initial discussion.
That was your, your.
Stance.
Individual opinion.
Correct, and that's why I was just giving my opinion and why I felt that way.
All right.
Which was my turn to speak. Any other discussion?
I have something to say. So I think in our conversation of this, it was clearly brought to us even by the attorney. That Tim's already been taking on a lot of controller roles. Um I know for myself, I've been here a short time. Um but I've been in a lot of professional businesses for twenty some years throughout the entire country, and I have. A ton of faith in Tim, his skill set, his knowledge, what he's brought to this county coming from from Hingham County. Um. I believe, yes, there's all things we can always do a little better on. I I've talked to Tim about, you know, some some more communication with things, and and we all agree that communication is very important. But Tim's skill set for our county, the knowledge, this additional role of him becoming a controller, I do not feel, yes, there are going to be some changes. But Tim has already done a lot of these control duties as administrator. I mean, Tim has clearly proven himself that. We need. An administrator, and we need a man of Tim's knowledge, experience to be in that position. It's not a big increase in pay. I really feel we strongly need to accept a three year agreement for Tim's. He's a huge asset to our county.
I I'm going to comment to to, back to that, I I think you misunderstood me. I don't disagree with his knowledge, his expertise, and he's done an amazing job.
Yeah.
My, my stance on this or why I feel that sway is because this is a brand new role, and it's not that. The individual in this role is at question. It's just with the initiation of this new role. I personally would like a one year contract and then reevaluate it. All goes well, I would have no problem with a three year contract, but since this is a brand new role. Um with this county, I I would like a one year contract. It has nothing to do with his knowledge, skill set, or or um. Him as a person, it's this specific role. Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
Um. As I told, um. I really, I do like him. I mean, I do like him. Uh and he does have a lot of knowledge. I'm just nervous about a three year contract as an administrative controller. I'd like to test, test the waters first. If all goes well, then I would not have any problems. After the one year going first. after the one year going further with it. I'm just I, I'm a conservative, very conservative. And, uh, I agree with that. I think he's done a great job. But I don't, I don't know about this administrative controller. I want, I, I, I want to see first before I agree to three years. And I, I think he's done a great job too. I really do. But, um, there's some things that, um, communications, I think is, is the thing that, that, um, it has bothered me the most during this, but other than that, I think he's done a great job. But I just don't know about this controller. Uh, administrator. It's a whole, it's a whole new, whole new ballgame. Some comments I have.
Mr. Mahew? Tim, would you like to, would you like to say anything?
Sure.
Go ahead.
On Tuesday, I was presented with this contract, which I assume maybe wrongly was something crafted by this board. This was your offer. And I'm prepared to accept that offer today. However, if you're going to change this, if you're going to take two years of the job security away, uh, we're going to renegotiate this, uh, because the terms are not going to be the same. Uh, and well, I'll just let it go at that. If this resolution does not pass and you want to do a substitute resolution for a one year contract, uh, we'll talk about it at that point. So we'll just wait to see how the vote goes. Um, I will remind you, we are out of time. This is your last meeting before the current contract expires and I will not be available for two weeks, uh, starting next week uh, to engage in further negotiation. So we've got to get this done today if we're going to do it.
Do you, are, are you available next week at the Committee of the Whole?
No.
Oh, you're not available because I, I spoke with, um, uh, the other county attorney and he said, even though it's, it's not typically what we do at the Committee of the Whole, you are able, because we, we talked about the deadline um, with Matt and, and he said you, you can vote at the Committee of the Whole. So that was my question is, is we are out of time on this i- is, and, and he brought that option up for next week. So did, uh, did you have anything done to add to that? Add to any of this? You're, you're muted. I can't hear you.
No, I'm sorry. I'm not muted. Then can you hear me?
Yeah.
No, I don't think I have anything that I wasn't at the previous meeting. I know you had a conversation with Tim and I, um, I think you're relating your conversation with him. Then do you have a specific question for him?
No, I, I just wanted to see, I, I knew you were on there. If you had anything else you wanted to add.
I would ask, um, the body if there's any for lack of a better way, the middle area, perhaps a three year contract with a ninety day severance period instead of, I believe it's six months, isn't, ends now? Something like that.
Did you guys hear that?
Yes.
Is that an option for a three year contract with a, uh, ninety day severance?
This, um, what is it? Matt, Matt, Matt pulled the, uh, pulled the, uh, commissioners and and the majority said six months. That was last week.
Okay.
So is there any further discussion? Commissioner Mahew? Is there something you wanted to add, Tim?
Um, again, that's a change to the terms of the agreement that was presented to me. I would expect an opportunity to provide a counter.
Commissioner Mahew, do you have anything? You haven't spoke. No.
I don't feel I did.
Okay. Roll call vote.
No.
Nope. Is there any further discussion that I missed?
Now, if we vote no to this, the motion, then we no longer have an administrator.
As of May eighteenth, correct?
That's, I just want to know that right off of that. Everybody understands that.
And I'd like to make a note on this would extremely go south. And on May eighteenth, we no longer would have Tim Delahanti. I'll tell you what, I don't want that on my shoulders. You guys got to think really, really strong about what we're doing here.
So what's a no vote mean?
The motion is to, to
Accept. The motion is to accept what we have on Resolution Six K, which was read. Resolution to Approve Administrator slash Controller Employment Agreement. But you were, you were part of that call session and you've been part of the negotiation. So you should know that answer.
So I eventually say that maybe we should have another, we should have a special meeting so he can make a counter so we can vote again.
We haven't voted on this. Right now we're voting on Six K.
Yeah, okay.
Which is Resolution to Approve Administrator slash Controller Employment Agreement.
Yeah.
But if, if this is denied, if as of May, Tim doesn't have to come back to the table at all, correct? If you choose not to.
Right. The space, I hope you people are basing these on facts and not just emotions. We're not here to have emotions to what we like and not dislike. It's, it plays a part, but
I, I think I did attempt to explain that, that this is why it's just
Well, that's, that you
The opinion.
There's there's five of us.
Correct. Any other discussion? Commissioner Simmons? Roll call vote.
Roger Mahew.
No.
Charles Woltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons? No. Greg Scott?
Yes.
Danny David?
No. Item six.
Unbelievable. Your department's welcome.
Resolution to Proclaim National. This week, this resolution is sponsored by prosecuting attorney Ladonna Schultz. The Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth at the Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. Members of the Police Department working in Ogumah County playing a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community. They recognize our duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence of disorder and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Approval of the resolution will declare the week of May fourteenth through twenty 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 three as Police Week in Ogumah County. The board wishes to extend an invitation to all citizens to observe May fifteenth, twenty twenty three as Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty.
I'll make a motion to
Yeah.
approve the resolution.
We have a motion for Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Mahew. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Charles Woltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Item seven, new business letter of support of Spark Grant Application. Is this who's, who's got the floor on this? Anybody? I don't, I don't know much about this. This The city of Rose City will apply for funds from the DNR Spark Grant Grant Program designed to modernize local parks and develop new local public recreation opportunities. Rose City application seeks to transform a trailer park into a campground over the next four years. Support from other government agencies is encouraged. The city of Rose City asked for a letter of support from the Board of Commissioners. A motion is necessary to authorize the board chairperson to sign a letter of support on behalf of the board.
I'll make a motion that we uh, show a support toward this. They were here a couple of meetings ago and talked to us about it. This is a letter of support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
Yeah.
Support from Commissioner Mahew. Do we need a, uh, this, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries item seven B High Banks Committee Proposal Discussion. After discussion at the May fourth Committee of the Whole Meeting, District Three Commissioner Charles Woltie suggested formation of a special committee to discuss the future of High Banks' property consisting of himself and community members representing interested organizations such as Mills Township, Boy Scouts, Troll Landing, et cetera. Commissioner Wiltie asked that the board discuss his proposal. Commissioner Wiltie, you have the floor.
Um, you guys all know, I feel that the county, the state's property, you guys have heard me say many times, the assets, property, to our counties, to a number of our townships, especially that border or, or that the High Banks is in. The Boy Scouts were here last week. They made it pretty clear that they probably wouldn't be in a position to buy, but they would really enjoy some form of collaborations where they would be more than willing to most likely get involved to help with maintenance, upkeep, what have you. Uh, the owner of Troll Landing, she basically said the same exact thing. I know we have smaller people in the area of Mills Township, possibly even Churchill Township that I could speak with, form a committee. You know, do our normal roles. We get, we have monthly meetings. Get everybody involved. We have a main schedule. We see what, what items with that main schedule need to be worked on. We estimate those items. Figure out, you know, who's going to take care of what. Um, it sounds that these, these entities are willing to split some costs. Mills Township has already committed after meeting this past Tuesday to continue with lawn maintenance, weed whacking and what have you. So I'd really like to have the opportunity to be, I'd be willing to be the chairman on this. I think we've got some really good groups around there um, that also not only financially, um, see the results of, of the High Banks, but you know, also some people that just use the High Banks. Uh, I feel like we have a really strong committee and it could really help with, uh, the big concerns of, you know, of the county not maintaining it. The thought of it possibly just coming in disarray. Uh, we could get this committee going immediately and I feel it would be, um, a big asset to, uh, the sustainability of the High Banks.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mahew.
The only thing I wanted to know about is your committee, your people that are there, if they get hurt, are we liable for them? When they're claiming the high banks? That would be my question. I don't know the rules or the laws, but
Yeah, um, man, refer that to Tim. I mean, we have, you know, parks, somebody gets hurt at one of our parks. Uh, depending upon the incident, I guess it's an instant by instant basis of what happened. How, you know, if we're responsible or not.
We, we carry liability coverage or types of incidents, so.
Any further questions?
That's just the one I had.
So Tim, do we need a resolution here to approve the, moving forward with the High Banks Committee Proposal? Or do we just do this as discussion?
You wouldn't want to, um, if, if you intend on doing it, it will eventually take a motion of the board. I would suggest that when you next meet as a committee of the whole, you discuss that within the framework of your rules of procedure uh, and set up the committee accordingly, uh, following pretty much a similar template that you did with the Transit Committee.
Okay, so we'll put that in committee of the whole. Item seven, six claims. We have claims in a total of, I wrote it down somewhere. I wrote it down. Yeah, that sheet.
No. Then just total.
Right there, I guess.
I'll make a motion to prove the claims.
Hundred and eighty, or a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, forty-four, hundred and ninety-six thousand, forty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, Commissioner, you have a motion, Commissioner Scott, is there?
If you want to initiate a conversation about it, I'll make the motion to, to
I'm sorry, then. We have a motion, Commissioner Scott, with support from Commissioner Simmons. Um, Commissioner Simmons and I did, uh, review claims this week uh, together. Um, some big, big, big ones we seen in there was, I think, the final uh, bill from Jack Morris Convention for the Annex Building. Um, I don't recall the exact amount of that. Um, what else do we see there? The emergency management was fourteen thousand. That was a, uh, cyber source. Uh, Travelers was a pretty big expense in there. I called and went over, we had some questions. Uh, Travelers was fifteen thousand. Um, I called and went over some questions with, with Tim.
Include that a settlement?
Um, it was a total of a couple settlements, correct?
Four or five, uh, cases and they were primarily attorney bills.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you ever find out on that stump grinding? I think you emailed me back on that. There was a hundred and fifty dollar cost for a stump grinding.
Or we had that large conifer that was cut here a year or so ago, uh, right by the entrance door and that stump was ground, but uh, over the winter time, uh, Chris had noticed there was an awful lot of root activity in that area too that needed further grinding. So that's, that's what he did. And I think you'll see grass coming up over the top of that now.
And I had also, Commissioner Simmons, you and I had discussed, there was a, a bill in there. It looked like somebody had gotten, uh, hurt on the job and we do pay those outright unless it's over a thousand dollars. I had a conversation with Tim about that. It's over a thousand, then we turn it into workman's comp, but if it's under, we just pay it.
That one, just kind of take care of.
There's some warrants in there.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else that, that stuck out at us? Any other questions, Commissioners?
No, it looked it looked tremendous. When I look over the strategy.
No. Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons, this, Greg Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Woltie.
Yes.
Item eight, unfinished business.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I guess you guys had just talked about having a, uh, and now would be the time to put it underneath unfinished business, I guess, a special meeting.
Well, well, we're going to talk on that kind of a range then, I guess, like because I'm waiting for motions for adoption or, or matters on the floor. I'm gonna I have a I have, I have a motion to make.
Okay.
I'll make it now. I moved that we that we sign a three year agreement with Tim on as an administrator only, not controllers. If he subs that at, at current at, 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 basically the exact same basic contract he offered us in the beginning. It was the increase of pay, uh, con- uh, concurrent with, uh, with any other department head and as a matter of fact, I got a copy of it right here. He gave it to us the first time around before we started talking about controller. So I'll make a motion that we, we accept this contract here. It will not be controller. It would not be for ninety thousand dollars. It'll be for three years. Now, if you got a problem with this new job, you don't have it with this. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have support?
This, this is done and just for my clarification.
Yeah.
Are you, are you, is your motion just to basically extend the exact existing contract for three additional years?
Yes, it'd be, it'd be a, a brand new three year agreement for the job he's doing right now. When we first entered into discussions with him, he, he took out the contract that he had and made some changes on it. Basically took less time off and said that he would work at, at an increase comparable to what our, our department heads, let's see, uh, subsequent, subsequent increases will be equal to increases allocated to other department heads through the annual budget.
Is this a contract? Did our legal team have an opportunity to look at this contract or did they, they compile it? Because I, I don't think I've seen this contract in me.
Well, you well, this is a copy of the contract we've had with them for the last three years and Michigan Municipal League is the one that, that drew it up for us. You know, I mean, I, I don't mind.
What can I add to this? Can I, can I make a comment to what he's trying to do or what I think he's trying to do?
Go ahead, Commissioner Wiltie.
So I think the main reason Commissioner Scott's trying to do this, as much as I feel I don't want to do this because I think the role that Tim could bring on as controller with the extreme budget issue we have right now would be extremely valuable to our county. We don't feel good about leaving this meeting today with not having a contract with Tim Dalahanti. This, I said it earlier, this could be devastating for our county if this goes extremely south. Devastating.
Are, are you complete?
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor, do we have support on that?
Excuse me, I'm also going to interrupt, I understand you have the, the motion on the floor. Some of what you're talking about and what Commissioners God has suggested, uh, with going back to the previous contract, I know was the subject of a previous closed me, meeting with Matt uh, to discuss, um, the privileged legal opinion regarding the roles of the administrator and the controller and the necessity of all those obligations were, were covered. And I think our office had discussed previously and, and within that opinion, uh, some of the concerns with the existing contract, I'm, and, um, and I know Matt was handling that, but one thing I, I would suggest to you is the body does have the ability to go back into closed session for further discussion of that, um, previous legal, uh, privileged legal opinion, written legal opinion regarding the controller and the admin, et cetera. If that's something that the board's inclined to do or, you know, wants to have further discussion, it's because it's, it's been raised to go back to just the administrator model.
So at the end of this meeting, I, I don't, we could go back into closed session before adjournment to further discuss this and then possibly come back out with a motion?
Yeah.
Are you, how do you guys feel about that?
Yes.
Tim, are you okay with that?
I think I meant to shorten end of the stick on that, so sure.
How about if we do that? Are you, do I, can I, I'm sorry, I'm thrown off by this too. We will do that, we will add to that. Cause you, you have something you wanted to add?
I'm not saying a word.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
So we're going close second, we're going for, uh, legal opinion, right?
Look at the motion from the lawyer when we get to that point, so we do it, so we do it legally.
Yeah.
Item nine administrators report.
Yeah, last Tuesday, we had our open meetings act training, I think we had somewhere in the neighborhood twenty people attending live and on Zoom. I thought that was a very productive meeting, I do have the um, you know, what's called the summary, uh, of the open meetings act that the attorney's offices prepared, I have that in PDF format and we will distribute that as, as requested. Uh, very good document, it was, it's current, uh, but subject to change here over the next few months as the legislature starts agreeing with the act itself, there might be changes and I'm sure that we'll get other, uh, updates as that happens. The balance of what I had to report was all, uh, everything in the future, I don't want to presume anything, so I will forego any further comment.
Okay. Item ten elected officials and department head reports, do you have anything?
I do, I think you guys made a huge mistake. I think Tim is more valuable than anything this county has ever seen. And the, like Commissioner Wiltz said, this could be huge for our company, for our office, this. That's all.
Treasurer, come on up.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This podium right in front of you.
I'm not sure.
Karen Pickelowski, your Oklahoma County Treasurer, I'm going to agree with Brack and, and Charles, um. I will one hundred percent admit, I did not agree with having a county administrator because I did not think this county could afford it. It has made a huge difference. I've been here twenty-five years and I have not seen better progress than in the last few. He's made a world of difference in both policy and procedure. He is leading this county into a whole new generation of good things. We need the budget control, you need someone to hold accountable for that budget. This is the person that you need to do that. I brought over the book of, of county government, um, guide, so you can see the difference between a controller and administrator. What those roles are, if you need it for your meeting, please take it in there with you for closed session. It is so important for the leadership of this county to have someone in this position like Tim who is easy to work with, who has the leadership skills that this county needs, so please talk about it, discuss it, make a good decision for this county today, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sheriff, do you have anything?
Just like to say, good morning, Brian Gilbert, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I would like to say that, uh, through your, your closed meeting, you probably ought to reconsider this. He's the go-to guy for us, so, so that's all I'm going to say, and thank you, Tim, for everything you do for us, I appreciate that. I've got two, two, three items to mention and that, and I'm done. I hired a new administrative secretary, Carol Turner, she's going to do awesome for us, she's already, she's been on the job four days, three and a half days and she's really clicking over there and things are getting done, we're going to have a lot more progress over there, okay? Uh, number two, uh, Brian Oger slated for retirement, June twenty-second, uh, that's a bridge that we gotta, gotta cross yet. I wanted to get the secretary position locked down before I go to this, this, uh, bridge. Uh, Police Memorial Monday at eleven o'clock. And we're going to be recognizing six police officers from Michigan who died in the line of duty. So if you'd like it, appreciate it, um, and thank you very much.
What time is that?
It's eleven o'clock.
Sheriff, you just stepped out for a minute, we, we did pass that police week.
Okay.
Well.
I figured you'd think.
Let you know.
We owe it to the six individuals that died.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other elected official department heads, I don't think I missed anybody in the room, anybody on the phone? Jeff?
Yep, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Veterans Office, uh, ditto on the support with, uh, Tim, so, uh, I think this county's gotten a lot better with him here. Uh, to the veterans though, we have Memorial Day parade coming up on the twenty-ninth. We'll be stepping off from Second Street and proceeding down to the Veterans Memorial at eleven o'clock on the twenty, Monday, the twenty-ninth. Then we're going to be doing a, another ceremony out at Rose City, uh, Veterans Memorial at four o'clock uh, for the veterans out that way. Um, other than that, just a big support on Tim, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any, any other elected officials or department heads on the phone? No, uh, item eleven managers on the floor. Item twelve motions for adoption. Item thirteen Commissioners Report, Commissioner Simmons.
Uh, I went to, um, Parks and Rec and they're, um, they're, they're looking at, um, see if we can get that grant going again, um, which everything's gone up in price, so. Um, there's not enough money there to cover much, much of anything, really. Um, because the price has gone up so drastically since COVID has hit. Um, there was a complaint about the deer being malnourished at the deer park. And, uh, what the individual didn't understand is the deer right now are changing their coats and it looked like they were in bad shape, they always look pretty scruff when they change their coats. And so we had the veterinary income and, uh, the deer are very healthy and they're not malnourished, believe me. Uh, our person who takes care of the deer park does an excellent job and we're lucky to have him, really. Same way with the, um, with the campground, the people that take care of that, we're very fortunate. So mostly it's basically just the, um, Parks and Rec that, uh, have a, uh, given airport meeting uh, next week, I think it is, so I haven't talked, most of the airport, so that's about all I have, basically was the, uh, did your part. So.
Commissioner May, look, I'm sorry, are you done? Commissioner Mayhew?
I'm going to, uh, Commons, they're working on their sewer line trying to get, uh, grants and straighten that up because they just have a line, they don't have the sewer system. Uh, I went to Rose Township, they got some guys stealing garbage and they're trying to catch him. And, uh, they're still dealing with the fire department there often. Trying to get their new truck to be able to straighten their own, that's the only two I got.
Commissioner Wiltz?
Uh, I have my normal, I got lots of stuff. Uh, it's transit, I'm happy that we all approved the new construction out there. It'd be great for the transit, all local contractors are going to be a real good deal, uh, last week, me and Ray met with Brian Stein from the uh, building department, um, one problem that Ray was having with trying to run day-to-day operations was also be able to follow up and be consistent with, um, all of our maintenance issues. So I spoke with Brian and Brian has happily agreed to, um, come to the table and help out with this, so we all met last week, went over a lot of those issues that I've told you guys about. So, um, that's going to be real good for us, I will start seeing some of them items, be able to start moving forward. Uh, Saturday service was this past Saturday, um, everything seemed to go okay, I haven't heard anything that went wrong, so that's, that's really good, that was a big win for us, what we've been really wanting to work hard on to have our Saturday service back. Um, so that was really good to see, um, EDC, like I've said before, the EDC can offer a lot for our county, a lot of people um, just really don't understand what they all do, they, again, they think it's kind of bigger business stuff where it's really not, it's small businesses, big businesses, everything, so one thing we decided as EDC boards, we wanted to get more involved with our townships. So we have, we're going on the road, uh, that's coming Monday, May fifteenth at four o'clock, we're going to be at Mills Township. We put out flyers on Facebook pages, we've handed out flyers, trying to get people to come that have business ideas and just really don't know how to get to the next step, um, or are in current business and are looking to expand, be more efficient. So really excited about that, again, that's this Monday at Mills Township at four o'clock with the EDC, um, MSU extension, uh, we have our first meeting next week, we all get to meet each other, looking forward to that. Uh, there's some opening positions right now, I'm on the interview panel for, I'll know a lot more after next Monday, some of the good things that, that they're currently doing. Uh, Road Commission was there this past Wednesday, this time of year, gravel road project started underway, brining's going to be starting. Uh, they feel pretty good about the stability of the employees there, everything's good at the Road Commission. Uh, EMS, we've got a lot going on there, the admini- administrative assistant, Gail, for years and years, who, um, what I've seen and from her reviews, did a fantastic job, um, has retired. Uh, therefore, it's putting a little more pressure on the front of the house. We've got some plans in place to see how we can be more efficient with the front of the house management, but we do have applications right now, we're taking for a part-time administrative assistant position. Uh, the stability of the employees is better than it has been in a while, which is good, helps us overtime, helps with the morale, um, so we're working hard there at the EMS. Um, at my township, Mills, you know, big, big topics again, have been the high banks, um, that we know we've all been talking about. Uh, blight issues on those township, always an issue, it's been a big topic. A possible construction of a new township hall, um, those are all things they're working on. And I do want to make a, a point of a, a local community member who came a big at our meeting this past Tuesday. So Matt Jordan, who's leader of the, of the sting, which we talked about earlier. Um, they also go to our townships and they ask anything, they appreciate anything, but they ask so much per township president also helped. Well, they asked for Mills Township, it was just over six thousand dollars and the board was discussing and there was a board member that was kind of worried about that much money and then we were explaining, you know, what, what this thing all does. And Shane, uh, Gema- Gomez of, um, his company, he owns local towing. He offered during the meeting, he asked if he could speak and he said, if the board does the full six thousand, he will match it. So Shane of Local Towing out of Skidway Lake matched six thousand dollars, wrote to check out that night this thing, and I think that's fantastic.
Wow.
I just wanted to make a point of that. That's the type of things that do nothing but an absolute blessing for our community. And again, we know the importance, especially Skidway Lake, we have more issues in some of the other areas, that's, that's an issue, so a huge shout out to him for that, I mean, that's what's going to make this county work, is we need more community leaders get involved. And, uh, that's all I have for.
Commissioner Scott?
Uh, I attended the West Branch City Meeting, the first of, uh, first of May. They, uh, they just, uh, awarded some special, some permits for special events this summer. Uh, they talked about property purchase from the county, uh, uh, which they, uh, turned, turned down first right of refusal. And then they have some property in the city that Brian sell. Uh, so it was a pretty short meeting, they had a couple of reappointments to, uh, order review and planning commission, uh, in the city there. And I was absent to, uh, Boston Township meeting this week, I was out of town. And I wasn't able to get to Park and Rec either, so that's all I got.
I attended Churchill Township, uh, they were talking about their ARPA funds, they are going to be purchasing a outside, uh, gazebo type of, uh, thing for possible picnics. Um, some outdoor activity. Kind of something similar to there at, uh, the Little League Fields. They're also replacing the windows in their hall there that definitely need to be done, they moved that to come out of their ARPA funds, they talked about gypsy moss. Um, and there's a property also that they, uh, discussed that is, uh, right there on State Road, that's a, a home that's, uh, partially burnt down and and unfortunately, um, they did, uh, not vote to, to, uh, distribute the funds to totally, uh, uh, remove that home, uh, they felt like it would, it would be too, too much of a cost to the township. So they, the land bank was brought up at that point in time. I went to Hill Township, there wasn't a whole lot, that was a fairly quick meeting, um, not a whole lot discussed there, they said those meetings get, uh, much larger as, uh, residents returned, uh, to their summer homes around all those lakes there, um, I did not attend Logan this past uh, month. A nine-one-one I attended last night, uh, we did an evaluation on the, uh, director over there, Jesse, when, which went very well, they have a uh, dispatcher that is retiring Danny Johnson after, I believe they said twenty-two or twenty-three years of service. Um, he is retiring, so one of their part-timers will be moving up to full-time. Um, Jesse got some furniture for her office. That was really it there, it was a fairly quick um, quick, quick meeting, they're keeping their overtime down to a minimum. Um, that was it for me. Any, anything else, did you guys? Item fourteen, general public comment. Rules for this, state your name for the record, to speak only the chairperson. Please stand behind the podium when speaking, four limit comments to three minutes or fewer, and five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking, is there any public comment in the room? Come on up, sir. Get your name.
Steve Yu, cause Indian Wood Trail, Mills Township.
Finish by your last name.
Y U C H A S Z.
Go ahead.
Uh, my comments, I have a, a, a number of things, first, thank you, Mr. Wiltz, for acknowledging Shane Gomez and his donation, that was huge the other night. Um, I would like to express my support of the county maintaining ownership and involvement in the high banks. I think, uh, that serves multiple purposes with regard to, uh, being a jewel in our county and providing access to the, uh, Rifle River as well as emergency access for, for folks on that river. I'm a little confused on another item I heard earlier, apparently there's a vehicle purchase approved for, or was approved or funded by for the sheriff's department for a vehicle and that's been on the agenda for two and a half years now, I'm a little confused why that's getting kicked down the road so far. Uh, vehicles aren't getting cheaper now, I understand there was a supply issue during COVID. Uh, but, but I think we need to address that issue, especially if the funding's already there. Uh, my third item, I'm very concerned about the fence sitting in the back and forth with regard to Mr. Delahanti's employment here, I'd like to reinforce Madam Treasurer's comments. This man has demonstrated his ability and his expertise in this field. And I think it would be a huge disservice to this county to not address this man's, uh, employment. I think we're putting ourselves in harm's way by by not accepting this contract as it stands, I think three years keeping that man on, on our employment rolls is vital to the function and the budgetary constraints that this county faces. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, come on up, sir.
Joseph Church. Monster Township. A year ago, I was here for the ORB ordinance and there was stipulation in the ordinance that, uh, specified a thirteen-inch. in the ordinance that specified a thirteen-inch rim. specification for the vehicles. You corrected that on the ordinance, but the flyers that came out still have that thirteen-inch rim requirement.
Okay. Where, where'd the flyer come from?
I picked it up at our township meeting.
Sheriff, sheriff would like to address you.
We had that flyer made up. I'll look into that and if we can change that. I, I remember the order. I'll address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Don, can you, can you give us the motion of what it will read to go into closed session?
Hi there. And once again, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So the emotion to go into closed session to discuss a privileged and confidential written legal opinion under MCL fifteen point two six eight eight.
I would, I would like to make that motion that you just stated.
Support.
We have a motion with support. Any discussion?
We will come out with the motion. I, I will take, I will make sometime from some type of a motion after close session.
There will be further discussion business after we come out of closed session. Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
We'll go in a closed session at ten thirty-two.
Have a good day.
You as well, sir.
Wait, will you be at the meeting next month, do you think?
More than likely.
I, I'd like after the meeting, I'll stab, we'll talk.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
The clerk had to step out, Don, so it's going to be just a minute and I think. Can someone get the door? I concur that anything said in that statement, that meeting, correct?
Yes. Who brought them up?
I'll make a motion.
We don't need another motion.
Back into open session at eleven seventeen. It's their, I'm going to entertain a motion to, which was originally a resolution to approve administrator controller employment agreement. To reconsider that motion. I'm going to make that motion. Do I have support? We have a motion with support. Discussion. Tim, did you want to speak?
As soon as I hear parameters of an agreement, I'll be happy to respond.
I think we need to make a motion to amend now.
Correct.
Well, I'm sorry, you haven't, yeah, I don't think, have you voted on the motion to reconsider?
No, we have not yet.
Yeah. So you need to vote on the motion to reconsider so that it's back on the table and then you make your next motion, whatever that would be.
Okay. We have a motion to reconsider. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Roger Mahew.
No.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Addendum, did you want to add an addendum, Commissioner Wiltzy?
So an addendum I'd like to add is the contract stays as a three-year contract and the only thing that we changed from a six-month to a three-month severance. From a six-month that was current to a three-month severance would be the change.
I'll support that. Discussion.
Ask your minister.
Tim, any commissioners with discussion?
Was that a motion?
Yes. An addendum to the, the current motion.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner, Commissioner Simmons.
Because I thought my contract said a hundred and eighty days.
It is. We just, we just approved an emotion to add them to ninety days.
Oh, you said three months and six months. It should be a hundred and eighty to ninety.
Correct.
Now six months to three months.
Okay. Ninety days. Right, Commissioner Wiltzy, is that what you wanted?
Ninety days.
Ninety days, okay.
Tim?
So that's, obviously changes the economics of the original proposal that I was given. So counter that. Ninety days now taken away from that, which we were two different directions. One, I could add to compensation or second. Something that may be a little more palatable is that with that removal of that ninety days, that county make a contribution to a MERS four fifty-seven. Retirement to about five percent of the pay. And then I'll be willing to accept that.
Can you state that again?
You would add an employer pay contribution to a MERS four fifty-seven plan. It's a retirement plan, five percent of wages.
Which, do you have a figure on that? What that would?
Well.
So how do we get a figure on that?
Seven percent.
Ninety thousand.
Well, right now, seven percent goes to the This would be five percent going to a MERS four fifty-seven, which is
Forty-five more dollars.
Yeah, roughly. It's, I don't know how to distinguish it. It's like a defined contribution, but it's a contribution that goes into a retirement.
So I, I need, that's a one-time distribution you want?
It could be done per payroll. If that's the way MERS does it, I don't want to upset the process, you know, by doing it for how long a time. So typically what you'll have is those contributions are payroll deduction out of an employee's paycheck to directly to MERS. And it's done, if it's not every other week, it's probably monthly. I don't know exactly what the Okay.
Can I, can I get, I, I want an amount of that then. I don't, I don't know how to figure that out exactly.
It's five percent of the pay that's offered.
Pay the pay that's.
Yeah.
Forty percent of that would be forty-five hundred.
You want that on an annual basis over the three-year contract?
It can be done as a, on a payroll, you know, every, every month, the way that's, that's normally deducted now. I don't frankly have a preference if it was all done at once. Obviously, it's all invested quicker and would have a quicker rate of return, but I don't expect that. I would just expect it to be followed whatever the current process is for doing that.
I bet you that thirteen thousand five hundred.
Over three years.
Yes, over three years, yes.
Which with the ninety-day severance that was lost is how much money?
Twenty thousand. Per year. A hundred.
Yeah, but the severance.
Twenty-five dollars a month.
Deal.
Correct.
And this is
That's correct.
A forever deal.
A hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, three years, for thirty-six months.
Say that again, Commissioner Scott.
You take forty-five hundred dollars. That's forty-five hundred a year, right? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So three seventy-five. But in my thirty-six months. Three hundred and seventy-five dollars, three hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. For the next three years. And of course, if you off them earlier net, then we don't have to pay that whole thing, right?
How do you guys feel about that? The counter offer. Commissioner Simmons?
So as it stands right now. So the six-month severance, that'd be forty-five thousand, right? If it was at ninety thousand, right? Forty-five? And so we switched that to one-third of that be twenty-five percent of that, I say ninety days, ninety days quarter of a year, right?
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, it was twenty-five. What's twenty-five percent of ninety thousand? Quarter of them. Yeah, I guess it'd be all right. Because a quarter of that, ninety thousand would be Yeah, a little over twenty thousand. A little over twenty thousand, yes. Yep.
Guess what?
What a question you asked me.
How did you feel about the counter offer?
Fine.
You agree? Commissioner Scott?
Let, let me.
The only way, the only way you get severance is if we fire him with without cause. It's the only way he gets it. If he quit, he doesn't get severance. If we get him doing something wrong, he gets severance. So it's only when you want to fire him with, with all cause.
Yeah, because the difference really isn't that much because it'd be
It's got nothing.
No, I, I hear you know, but the difference in the two.
Talking about setups that do better.
Three hundred and eighty days and then
Commissioner Wiltzy.
I mean, you guys obviously know my faith in Tim. This is just going to cost us more money. So Tim's a winner. We're going to succeed. It's just costing us more money, but I want to see Tim in a three-year contract. I want to see Tim administrator controller role. So whatever we have to do.
You know, I, I, I said this last week that I would be willing to go to that three-month.
You did.
I've been here willing to work with you.
Understand, but I don't.
I've been willing to compromise with you all the way down the line. Now, now Mr., Mr. Wiltzy's trying to compromise with you. You know, I mean, we're all supposed to work together for the common good, for the county. And here we're, we're working, we're trying to work with you.
Right. And we came out of a meeting with a compromise. So I don't think it's fair to sit here to say we're not compromising. We, we came out of that meeting with a compromise from a a hundred and eighty to ninety day.
Well, last week we had a compromise situation. And our attorney recorded that compromise. And in one week it changed.
I won't, I won't disagree with you. I was not part of that.
Well, you were. You put in your, you're putting your, your opinion as you walked out the door because you had to go.
I know, but it wasn't.
After that there was still some compromising going on. If you look at the minute meeting, it went on for another half an hour, forty-five minutes. So there was more to talk about. And he took the poll. He had three out of five. But that three out of five changed in one week.
I continue to say ninety days severance through that whole process.
Well, we don't have that attorney on the call to tell us, but he sent it to us in a letter. So which numbers did he count? He didn't count. He didn't count Jenny, because she was, was out, outside the room.
I, I kept reading before I left.
Okay.
Which was, which was a one-year.
You did.
A one-year ninety day.
And we had a three out of five.
You did. And I, and I just felt like we came out of that closest session and, and I, I agree about upon three-year and ninety day. So I, I think the counter is going to, I, I agree. I think it'll cost us more money. I, I personally am going to stick with my, my three-year and, and
Then call for the vote. Then let's do this. Point, point, point of order, call for the vote.
We, right now on the table, we have a motion for three-year ninety day with support. Roll call vote.
I want it to include that.
No.
No, right now that's what's on the, on the, that was a counter. Right now, that's what the Am I correct on, right now on the table, we have
But you can
A three-year, hold on, Commissioner Scott, right now on the table, we have three-year with a ninety-day severance. Correct?
Well, I'm sorry, because I guess maybe I didn't hear the motion that was made, but right now, I mean I believe you just have the contract as it was. I mean, I guess what I would like to hear is a motion to amend, a motion.
We did. Commissioner Wiltzy made it and I supported it. Correct, clerk? With a motion to amend to a three-year contract with a ninety-day severance.
It, I'm sorry, it's currently it's currently a three-year contract.
Correct, with a ninety-day versus the one-eighty severance.
So it would just be amending the contract from whatever it is currently to ninety, to ninety-day severance. And that's in the event of a, not, I believe that was not for cause terminated, but
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Well, if that motion's on the floor, then, 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 then the next vote would be on that motion to amend.
Correct.
But I have more discussion.
And then, and then I would expect a motion for final approval.
Hey, Commissioner Wiltzy?
My discussion is Tim has made it clear what off of what we stated on our amendment. Made it clear what, what he would like.
Correct.
And I want to see what he wants so we can keep Tim in his job.
He stated what he requested.
But I don't want to give him an extra five percent. It's going to cost us too much money along the way.
So we're back to, right now we have a motion on the table with support. And then it'll be up to the administrator if, if he accepts this, this contract, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. What was that?
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
No.
We have, I think that's it.
Oh, he's, we made it. Now this is an offering.
Correct, so Dan.
He has named his terms. Now we need a, a, a motion to accept his toner.
Hold on, Don. Can you take the floor, please?
Hi there. You know, you just voted to amend your amend your proposal that you had on your agenda. Okay, you haven't voted on final passage. That's usually what it's called. Somebody would move for final passage of this resolution. But you haven't done that yet. But in any event, I mean at some point in time, I think Tim has to you, you need to hear whether or not this is going to be accepted. I'm not sure. I've heard him say he's going to accept this. So I, I don't know what, what your intention is, just to continue to move forward if he may not in the end, accept this, or I, I just, I'm not sure what the intent.
So right now we have a, a motion that just passed with the contract. So now give the opportunity to Tim to either accept or decline.
You can have that conversation with him now, yeah.
Would you, Tim, would you like to have that conversation now? Would you like to have that conversation? How would you like to do this?
Well, I'd like to see a final vote on what the contract is you're offering and then I'll sign it or not.
Okay, I think we just made that vote, correct?
You voted on the amendment. You voted on amending it. Now, I would, what I would like to hear, what I would normally expect to hear is a motion for final passage of this resolution. I hear, I hear him.
With, with Tim's negotiation, correct?
Well, I think Tim just said he's not, I think Tim just said he's not going to respond until the body has, has made its final vote.
Okay, so I, I find a vote, I, I guess I apologize. I, I thought our final vote was what we just voted on.
No, that was, that was amending. That was, that was basically a motion to amend what you had in front of you.
So who would like to entertain a motion? Because I'm
I will.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that pass the contract as amended.
I'll support that. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I have some discussion.
Go ahead.
So again, we're kind of back to where we were earlier. Tim, Tim made it clear, we're not far from what we need to do. When I says it costs the county more money, I says it's just a waste of money, because. Tim is gonna prove. What we're asking of him. And in three years, the county is gonna be even in a better position than it was. And now, right now, we're taking a chance of losing all that still. I don't want this on my shoulders. Strongly disagree with what's going on here. Tim has proven what he's done to this county. You guys, we cannot take a gamble, a chance of losing him. We cannot take that chance, this county cannot afford it, our people cannot afford it, that's how big of a role Tim plays in this county. Guys, we cannot take this gamble.
We went into closed session, we came out. With a new offer.
Okay, we vote on this. And he's prepared to right now give us the, his counter, which he's already said it out loud. And then all we'd have to do is vote again to accept his counter offer.
Correct. Accept or decline.
Okay. Then call for the vote.
Commissioner Scott, did you have anything else, Dad?
Oh, call for the vote.
Commissioner Simmons? Tim?
Oh, we just got to vote now.
So it. What happens, I guess, Don, I have a question, if this go, if, if this is voted on and this is declined, does the previous offer stand to Tim with three-year? Ninety day?
I'm sorry, um. Could you, could you repeat your question, what, what happens, what?
I guess, Tim, can you state your counter, so everybody's clear?
Counter for in exchange for the uh reduction of the severance in half, the counter is to add. Employer paid contribution to emerge four fifty-seven plan at five percent of total wages.
Let me come on.
Which would be a total of?
Four thousand five hundred dollars a year.
A year.
This, four thousand five hundred dollars a year.
And there's another option we have too, we can go back to the original contract. For your. Underneath the severance, so there's three options we shall have. If we don't like his counter, we can say, well, then we go back to you. The three-year. One hundred and eighty, that's also an option.
Because with that counter, no matter what, we have to contribute the forty-five hundred dollars.
No, none of we say, no, we don't want to accept that.
With that offer that's on the table right now. Just so we're all clear, we have to contribute forty-five hundred dollars.
But that's not on the table right now.
It is, Commissioner Wiltie, I thought made it. Did I, did I misunderstand you?
No.
Make that?
No.
I, I, I'm.
Now, the contract of that.
Exactly, the processes are right now, I, I said I will support that counter, yes.
Okay, so.
The motion on the table right now is to adopt the contract as amended without his counter.
Right.
Right.
Aided by Simmons and seconded by David, that's what.
That passed.
That's what the discussion and motion that was last made that needs to be voted on.
Okay, so let's vote on that motion.
Well. All I'm saying is you can amend your motion, you made the motion, you, it's at a point in time where you can amend it. And, and bring in as current motion and bring in its counter. Already, you should say, I amend my motion to include the counter offer from. And, and accept and, and accept this and sign the agreement today. That's what you can do right now.
And it would have to be made by.
By the person that made the motion.
By Brett, by Commissioner Simmons.
Would you like to do any addendum to your motion?
No, I'd just like to offer this right now and, and see what his responses are.
You just heard it, he just told you.
No, he came back with a counter. So you want to leave your motion as is.
And we can still call it.
Correct, so you want to leave your motion as is right now?
Yes, without his. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table right now. And I supported that.
Yeah.
So roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes. No, no, that is now given to the. Him, and Tim has given us a response, so I make a motion then. To accept his counter offer. And, and enter into a, a contract with him, with the contract we just voted on. I accept his, I accept his counter offer. That's my motion. To enter a contract, accepting his counter offer.
My second.
We have a motion with support. Discussion. Tim, go ahead.
I want to add one thing, that the current contract. Uh, states, under these circumstances, the board shall continue to pay the administrator his salary and medical benefits for one year. Or the balance of the contract, whichever comes first. Uh, even going to the one hundred and eighty days is a compromise on my part. Uh, and so I, I do feel that regardless, I, I've made the compromise and I just want to put that on the record, it's uh. I think a very reasonable counter.
I think that will end up costing us. Uh. The forty-five hundred dollars. I think if this is the route we're gonna go, I think we're better off to go with. The one-eighty. Which I, and I, again, I think we came out of this uh. Compromising. Um. I, 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 I. That's all I have.
I'm willing to amend my motion if, if you're.
Yeah, and you had support on it, now we're open for discussion, because then we're gonna take a roll call on that, so.
Okay, but I, I have the option right now to amend the motion that's on the floor, because I've made it.
Correct.
So you, what you're telling me now is you'll go back to the hundred and eighty days and, and offer that to him. Would you take a hundred and eighty days without forty-five hundred?
That's not, I was not completed, what I expected was the motion that's currently on the table. That will end up costing the county more money. Versus the original offer, which was out there, which was three, three years and a, and a hundred and eighty day. I, we went into that closed session, I made my stance very clear, which was one year, which. Because of, because of the, the, the role, came out of that. I feel like I did compromise, I put out there three years, ninety days. I'm gonna stick with that.
You're at three years, ninety days.
I am.
And his counter offer is forty-five hundred dollars a year and, you know, you know, retirement part.
Correct.
And that's my motion to accept his counter.
Correct, Commissioner Simmons? Would you have anything?
Yeah, I think we're better off taking a hundred and eighty days.
So.
Then you can, if you feel that way.
No, the reason I say, and the reason I say that.
Mr. Simmons has a floor, guys.
Go ahead.
And the reason I say that is. If he passes and, and he does a good job. Then it'll just stick what it is, and we won't have to give that forty-five hundred dollars extra year. You know? It makes sense to me, but. And, and I would be the, the two-thirds, so. Um. I guess it'd be have to be three-year hundred and eighty days, I just think it would cost us too much money going the other route.
So are you doing an addendum to your, to, to?
Well, this is negotiations, this is open negotiations, an open meeting, so I, we can ask. The administrator, will you accept a three-year contract with a hundred and eighty days without the five percent?
I was asking Commissioner Simmons first if she wanted to do an addendum to that, to that. Order, that.
The motion that's on the table I made.
He's, he's the only one.
I'm the only one that can amend it.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah.
But we're in open negotiations with the administrator.
Yeah.
So it's fair to ask him if he'll accept the contract with a hundred and eighty days without.
Was previously written.
Yes.
And this, as I understand it, puts the contract back where it started today, right, yes?
Yes. So I will amend my motion. That we don't need the counter now, that, that it's a three-year contract with a hundred and eighty day severance.
Administrator Controller.
Contract as written.
Contract is written.
Yes.
We have a motion, do we have support?
I support.
Discussion.
Did that just go down earlier today?
Pardon me?
Didn't we vote that down earlier today?
We did, but after all of this debate, um, I, I, I felt like our closed session was extremely productive. People were respectful, which was appreciative. Um, I did feel like I came out of that with a compromise, which I um. Uh, after my. Original, um. So that, that, that's where I stand with that, so, yes, but we are back to that after all of that. After Tim's counter, after discussion, we're back to the original vote. Yes. This is majority, not supermajority, correct?
No, this, the controller job by state statute is supermajority.
Done.
Not to approve the contract.
Nice.
Give me, I'm sorry, to approve the contract right now?
Yes, we are back to just approve this original contract, it's gotta be majority vote, correct?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Did somebody make the motion?
We did, Craig, uh, Commissioner Scott did with support from Commissioner Wiltie back to the original contract.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
No.
Roger Mahew.
No.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons. What was that?
Jenny, you said you just go back.
Hold on, I didn't hear, what was her answer?
Wasn't one yet.
Didn't we thought?
Commissioner Simmons?
Commissioner Simmons?
I know, I know, I know.
Please.
Can I say anything?
No.
No.
Our time limit?
I don't, I would hope so.
Your time limit?
Commissioner Simmons, please. You, you just. You just agreed. Commissioner Simmons? Please.
I know.
Huh? I'm asking. Are you refusing to answer? Commissioner Simmons, are you refusing to answer? Please state your vote. For the record. Is there? I, I don't know what to do here.
If I can, um, I do want to, if you can still hear me, I do want to point out that your rules do require members to vote. Um, so, uh, rule eleven point one. Does require a yes or a no.
Yeah. Commissioner Simmons, please vote. Is there something more you need to vote, but I don't, I don't want to do here? Commissioner Simmons, would you like to speak?
Okay.
I'd like to.
Please vote.
Okay. Thank you.
She's got an opinion, I'd like to hear it.
Would you like to state something?
Oh.
Do you have a statement?
No.
Will you please, please cast your vote?
Yes.
We have, yes. Motion passed, can we have a motion to adjourn? At eleven fifty. I'll support eleven fifty, motion is earned.
Something fine.